Order of the meeting, the Verona Common Council for Monday, March 9th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the role.
Alder Person Cronin.
Present.
Alder Person Journey.
Here.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Cole.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
Present.
We have a quorum. Next, we will move on to public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so. All right, not seeing anyone run up to the podium, we'll move on to item five, which is approval of the minutes from the February 24th, 2020 Common Council Meeting.
Move approval?
Motion by Alder Ricky. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. Last chance for corrections to the minutes. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the February 24th, 2020 Common Council Meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Under Mayor's business, I just have two quick things. Mr. Sayer is going to briefly talk about the city's, city preparing for the coronavirus. We're very much in the preliminary sort of cautionary planning phase, but it's better to have a plan and not need it, than need a plan and not have it. My second item is in regards to the incident at the Verona Middle School in which the, a student was allegedly sexually assaulted, and in the school district's response to the incident, they did not contact the Verona Police Department. They did contact CPS, which takes care of their obligation as mandatory reporters under the law. However, I feel like using what's required under the law as, as a standard is, is very minimal, and I think that the school district owes, owes it both to the students, the teachers, and the community at large to do better than that. I sent an email just right before this meeting to the school board president and vice president and just asked them like, what's it going to take when there's a sexual assault for the school district to contact the police department? Because I think in the interest of public safety, that's, uh, what needs to happen. But anyways, that is, that is all I had for today. We'll move on to item seven, announcements. Any announcements from the council? Seeing none, we will move on to the Administrator's Report. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. A few updates tonight. Upcoming meetings that we have, we have a tourism meeting on March 17th. We have the park board meeting on March 18th, and just a reminder, the Common Council meeting will be on March 30th. So just mark your calendars accordingly on that. We are working on some policy updates right now, looking at cost of living allowances, a city's cell phone policy, and also TIF guidelines. We anticipate these policies will move forward in the near, in the coming months. Hometown Days Parade will be held on June 2nd at 12:00 PM, if you are interested, at noon. If you are interested in being in the parade, please RSVP to City Clerk Ellen Clark by May 15th. We have the following work anniversaries for Lisa Wiest of the Senior Center, Stacy Burkhart, Dave Walker, Brian Lammers, Jesse Christensen, Kalen Martin, and then we have some new employees also starting with the city on the 16th, including our new reference librarian, and then also a new parks maintenance worker. Regarding COVID-19, as the mayor said, city staff is having conversations regarding the outbreak. We are working with Dane County, the state of Wisconsin, the CDC, and CISA regarding COVID-19. We take a lot of our cues from both the CDC and just those state and federal agencies of kind of the guidance from them. A few things to consider, obviously, wash your hands often. That's the message we've been trying to spread to staff at all our facilities. We've added signs in our facilities. We're looking at getting additional hand sanitizer station here at City Hall. We do have the elections coming up on April 7th for this, just because of the, kind of the situation we have. We are encouraging people to vote absentee this year. I think right now, we have those hours posted kind of starting on March 17th and continuing to March 27th at City Hall. We also have hours at City Hall from the 30th to the 3rd of April, and then Saturday, March 28th. We do have hours at the Senior Center on March 18th, and at the library on March 21st. So those are in the packet for your, for information. We do encourage you to vote absentee just from the standpoint of, for some reason, if there was a quarantine of some type, that can potentially impact people voting, and so we'll encourage people to get out early and vote. Regarding city public buildings, like I said, we've had ongoing conversations. We'll take that guidance from the CDC and the state. We are committed to doing our best providing essential services as part of this. I think obviously, I had a conversation today with the Senior Center Director and also the library director, and they continue to monitor just adjacent communities as well and what other people are doing, so we're keeping a close eye on it. We've also started looking at just what remote options we have available. We have some staff that potentially would have the capabilities of having remote options. We have some staff, especially the essential services, whether it be the police officers, firefighters, even public works employees as well, too. If there's something that has to be done, typically, they're not in an office, they're out in the field doing that work. So those are situations that we're going to have to work through as well, too. So we are having those, those conversations daily and actively. Department heads are evaluating the impacts on their facilities and staffing, should there be a quarantine, or if there's an increased number of absences. So we're evaluating that as well, too. You know, we don't have exact guidelines in place. Part of the reason for, we're just exploring these options right now and preparing for it. So we'll continue to monitor the situation and provide you updates as appropriately required. You know, assuming, you know, there is a quarantine, assuming there is staff shortages, shortages, we'll look at that remote option. We'll look at those options of limiting hours, sharing of staff, we'll look at all options that are available, potentially looking at closing facilities as well, especially those facilities that may not, you know, be, you know, more of a kind of gathering place, especially the library and senior center, but that, those will be evaluated at that time. But those are all options that are on the table as we take a look at this and work through this. So, uh, working on it. If you have questions, I guess feel free to reach out to me by email. Like I said, we're in active conversations daily on this, so reach out. Any questions, comments, suggestions, we're open to it as well. But, you know, like I said, we're talking to their communities as well, too, and we're all, no different than the private sector, we're all looking at this and exploring what options we have. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Any questions for Mr. Sayer? Alder Ricky.
Well, I just want to end on a happy note mostly, but June 2nd is a Tuesday. Did you mean June 7th for the Hometown Days Parade, perhaps?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, let the, let the minutes show. Any other questions for Mr. Sayer? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Engineers' Report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. For the well 6 pumping station construction, roofing has been completed with penetrations for exhaust stack and vents. Shingle soffit and fascia are being installed. Electrical wiring and boxes are being completed. Ceiling doors, insulation, and painting are in process of being finalized. Well logging of geophysical data is being completed. For the Verona area high school construction, traffic improvements. Traffic will continue in the same location for another month or so. That is, West Verona Avenue opened to two lanes in each direction and west end circle in its winter stage. Underground electrical signal items may be placed along West Verona Ave and west end circle in prep for signal installation later this spring. Water main and storm sewer installations will continue along Wildcat Way and Stewart Woods Road through the next couple of months. Roadway grading and base placement will most likely begin within the next month, pending temperature. The Military Ridge State Trail and Wildcat Way pedestrian box culvert construction is complete with trail restoration and approach slabs remaining. Work is continuing on the Stewart Woods Road Bridge. Girders were set on March 5th and March 6th, and now they're working on forming the deck. The deck will be poured later this month or early next month. The Military Ridge State Trail reroute has been removed, and currently the trail is closed for a week or two to finish up the structure work. The trail may need to be closed again in the spring to complete trail restoration items. For the 2020 asphalt rehabilitation project, the project will consist of replacing the asphalctic surface on Northern Lights Road between Epic Staff Park A and Epic Staff Park B. Bids were received on February 18th, and Payne &amp; Dolan was the low bidder. Awarding the contract was recommended. The project is anticipated to begin on or after June 15th and be completed by July 3rd. For the 2020 chip seal project, the project consists of chip sealing streets in the West Ridge Estates, Thompson Heights, and Cross Country Heights subdivisions. Bids were received on February 18th, and Farners Asphalt Sealers was the low bidder. Awarding the contract was recommended. The project is anticipated to begin on or after May 26th and be completed by June 30th. And finally, for the major design projects underway in the city, for the Eastside Interceptor Design, the design study report is finalized. Preliminary plan and profile sheets of the proposed interceptor have been reviewed by city staff. Permits have been submitted to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Coordination will begin within the next two months with properties along the corridor. And for the Lincoln Street Stormwater Facility, Facility Design, Brown &amp; Caldwell is coordinating with the permitting agencies on revised layouts and will begin to formalize the permit applications. The agencies have provided positive feedback on the layout and operations. Next steps are to begin detailed design and permit applications. And with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions on the Engineers' Report? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 10, which is Committee Reports. First up, we have the Finance Committee. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to make a motion regarding the payment of the bills in the amount of $1,915,911.60.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Cronin. Alder Kemp.
Yes, just for the sake of discussion, first, this, this week, we have a payment of the bonds, the 2,000, Series 2013A bond in the amount of $478,135. There's also a large payment for the, the third school road payment in the amount of $1 million, and then one that's near and dear to my heart, a payment to the Wisconsin State Supreme Court for continuing judicial education for our municipal judge in the amount of $700.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Anything further from Finance?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item 10, which is Public Safety and Welfare. Alder Ricky.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve a change of agent request from QuickTrip Inc. for QuickTrip number 456, 2145 County Highway PV, Verona, Wisconsin, 53593.
Motion by Alder Ricky. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Touche. Alder Ricky.
QuickTrip Inc. has requested a change of agent for their combination Class A and Class A liquor license at QuickTrip number 456 from Alexander Abel to Jim M. Thompson.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting the change of agent request from QuickTrip Inc. for QuickTrip 456 at 2145 County PB, Verona, Wisconsin, 53593, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Alder Ricky.
Next is a motion to approve ordinance number 20-959, amending Section 7-1-8 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Verona related to animals on public property.
A motion by Alder Ricky. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Touche. Alder Ricky.
The proposed ordinance amendment allows service dogs, rescue dogs, and police and fire canines to be located on public grounds and cemeteries. The proposed change reflects current practice of what animals the city allows on public property. Staff recommends the Common Council approve this ordinance amendment relating to animals on public property.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 20-959, amending Section 7-1-8 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Verona related to animals on public property, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Anything further from Public Safety and Welfare?
That is all from Public Safety and Welfare.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 10C, Plan Commission. I believe I will turn this over to Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. The first item is ordinance number 20-960, rezoning land at 103 North Franklin Street from neighborhood office to central commercial. The proposed zoning map amendment would allow for an office and to make custom wood bats in the existing building at 103 North Franklin. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on March 2nd, 2020, and discussed the, the project. Comments from the Plan Commission included questions about an office use and the making of bats, why the applicant chose this property, will the exterior improvements occur, such as painting, support for the land use as it is a low-impact use to the neighborhood, support to keeping the existing building, and how would the business expand on this property. The Plan Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend for the approval of the zoning map amendment.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, motions on this item? Alder Cole.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 20-960, rezoning land at 103 North Franklin Street from neighborhood office to central commercial.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Cole?
No, thank you.
I'll just say, basically what I said at the Plan Commission, I think this is a great, low-impact use on the neighborhood. It cleans up the building, which was in, in pretty rough shape, and it, and it preserves a historically interesting building. So I think, I think this is a, a win-win for the neighborhood and a win for the city. So I hope, I would urge you to support it. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 20-960, rezoning land at 103 North Franklin Street from neighborhood office to central commercial, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. The next item is Resolution 20-008, approving a conditional use permit for 103 North Franklin Street to allow light industrial activities incidental to indoor sales or services land use. The proposed conditional use permit would allow for an office and to make custom wood bats in the existing building at 103 North Franklin Street. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on March 2nd of 2020 and discussed the, the project. Comments from the Plan Commission were previously noted in the zoning map amendment summary. The Plan Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend for approval of the conditional use permit.
And to clarify, Mr. Sayer, there was a condition put on in regards to soundproofing for this item?
Yes, there were three conditions on there. The conditions related to the soundproofing, the size of the building, the size of the actual woodworking area, and I'd have to pull up the third condition here real quick. Just bear with me. It's a good catch, though. Thank you. The three conditions that were put on there were, one, the total area devoted to light industrial activity shall not exceed 15% of the total area of the buildings on the property. Two, the production area shall be physically separated by a wall from other activity areas and shall be soundproofed. And three, any noise from the building shall conform to the standards of the city's ordinances. So those are actually requirements that are in the code as part of the conditional use permit process.
Alder Cole.
What are the operating hours? Do we know?
One second. Let's see. The operating hours would be... Well, the applicant is here tonight. Maybe he wants to come up. Can he come, just bear with that?
If the applicant would like to answer the question, and if you could introduce yourself, of course.
Yes, my name is, sorry, my name is Brad Durazio. I am the applicant for the property. So thank you for your support. Appreciate that. Operating hours, my business partner and I both have full-time jobs, so the vast majority of the time, it's going to sit empty. Right now, we maybe work like 10 hours a week, mostly on Saturdays and Sundays, you know, maybe something during the week, but nothing that would be, you know, very late hours or very early hours or anything like that.
Anything further, Alder Cole?
No, I'd, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-20-008, approving a conditional use permit for 103 North Franklin Street to allow light industrial activities incidental to indoor sales or service land use.
With the conditions specified in the packet?
Yes.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Touche, I think. Anything to add, Alder Cole?
No, thank you.
Motion before the body. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number R-20-008, approving a conditional use permit for 103 North Franklin Street to allow light industrial activities incidental to indoor sales or services land use with the conditions specified in the packet, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. So the next five items on the agenda here, we'll, I'll relate to this, this one item, which is the, the Epic Platte. So this is Resolution Number 20-009, approving a plat to create two lots and two outlots located at 1979 Milky Way. The proposed plat would reduce the number of parcels on the Epic campus from 23 tax parcels to two lots and two outlots. Currently, there are lot lines dividing some buildings. The proposed plat will clean up the property lines and ensure lot lines do not divide buildings. The Plan Commission discussed the plat on March 2nd of 2020 and voted 5 to 0 to recommend for the approval.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, motions? Alder Cole.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-20-009, approving a plat to create two lots and two outlots located at 1979 Milky Way.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Touche. Anything to add, Alder Cole?
No, thank you.
Motion before the body. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number R-20-009, approving a plat, a plat to create two lots and two outlots located at 1979 Milky Way, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. The next item is ordinance 20-961, rezoning Epic Systems Corporation lots 1 and 2 to suburban industrial and outlots 1 and 2 remaining as rural ag. The proposed zoning map amendment would ensure that all lands within lots 1 and 2 are zoned at suburban industrial, and outlots 1 and 2 are zoned rural ag. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing March 2nd, 2020, and discussed the plat and the zoning map amendment. The Plan Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend for approval, approval of the zoning map amendments. So what this is doing is rezoning the lands that were just previously approved in the plat.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Or questions, comments, or motions, I should say. Alder Cole.
Let's take it again. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 20-961, rezoning Epic Systems Corporations lots 1 and 2 to suburban industrial, with outlots 1 and 2 remaining as rural agricultural.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second? I think that was seconded by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Cole?
Nope.
Motion before the body. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 20-961, rezoning Epic Systems Corporation lots 1 and 2 to suburban industrial, with outlots 1 and 2 remaining as rural agricultural, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. Next item is Resolution R-20-10, releasing certain restrictions and grants of easements pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 236.293 related to the Epic 2 plat. As part of the Epic plat, existing easements, including public sanitary easements, public water easements, public drainage easements, and environmental corridors will be modified and released. Staff and the city attorney have reviewed the releases. They have no concerns with release. Staff recommends approval of the resolutions releasing certain restrictions and easements. So as part of this plat, we, we've also cleaned up a lot of the easements located on the property. So as part of that, we have to actually formally release those, and that relates to those public sanitary easements, public water easements, and drainage easements. This is the formal release of those easements that were just modified in the previous plat approval.
Thank you for the explanation. Questions, comments, motions? Alder Touche.
I have a question. Did the city pay for those easements?
Mr. Sayer.
I'm not aware of that. I mean, we saw, the, no, I'm getting a lot of headshakes of no, so I'm, the answer to that is no.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, or motions on the topic? Alder Ricky.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-20-010, releasing certain restrictions and grants of easements pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, Section 236.293, related to the Epic 2 plat.
Motion by Alder Ricky. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Cronin. Anything to add, Alder Ricky?
No.
Motion before the body. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number R-20-010, releasing certain restrictions and grants of easements pursuant to Wisconsin statute, Section 236.293, related to the Epic 2 plat, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Mr. Sayer.
All right. So the next one is Resolution Number 20-11, terminating certain restrictions on a plat pursuant to Wisconsin statute, Section 236.6.293, related to the Epic 2 plat. The original Epic plat contained a restriction related to future WISDOT reviews once Epic exceeded 3,000 employees. To date, Epic has more than 9,000 employees, and this restriction is no longer applicable as the city has completed updated traffic impact analysis for the area. The resolution will release Epic from the previous plat restriction, and WISDOT is comfortable with this release. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, motions? Alder Cole.
I'll make a motion to approve, sorry, Resolution Number R-20-011, terminating certain restrictions on a plat pursuant to Wisconsin statute, Section 236.293, related to the Epic 2 plat.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Cole?
No, thank you.
Motion before the body. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number R-20-011, terminating certain restrictions on a plat pursuant to Wisconsin statute, Section 236.293, related to the Epic 2 plat, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Mr. Sayer.
All right, last one. Resolution Number 20-12, discontinuing portions of roads pursuant to Wisconsin statute, Section 66.1003, related to the Epic 2 plat. The proposed resolution would discontinue portions of Northern Lights Road as part of the Epic plat. State statute requires the Common Council to introduce the resolution and provide notice to adjacent property owners of the discontinued roadway. At least 40 days after the resolution is introduced, the owners are notified. The council may act on the resolution. Staff recommends the council introduce the resolution, discontinue portions of a road pursuant to Wisconsin statute 66.1003. Staff anticipates the council will act on the resolution on April 27th of 2020, and at that April meeting, we'd act on the resolution to discontinue. We'd also have a couple of items on the agenda that night. One, for a quick claim of some land, and then also a lease for the, the tunnels that are in the right of way. So the motion here, if someone's looking to make it, would be the, kind of the second to last sentence there. We're just introducing this resolution tonight, and then we let it sit for 40 days or more, and then it comes back on that April 27th. That's actually when you vote on it, but there would need to be a motion to introduce this resolution tonight.
And just to clarify, we would then vote on the motion to introduce?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone interested? Alder Cole and Alder Ricky?
I was going to make the motion introduce, but did anybody else have questions? No? Okay, so the word, so it would be, make a motion to introduce resolution. Okay. So I'm making a motion to introduce Resolution Number R-20-012, discontinuing portions of roads pursuant to Wisconsin statute, Section 66.1003, related to the Epic 2 plat.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Cole?
Thank you.
Alder Ricky, is your hand up? Alder Kemp? Motion before the body. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of introducing Resolution Number R-20-012, discontinuing portions of road pursuant to Wisconsin states, Wisconsin statute, Section 66.1003, related to the Epic 2 plat, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Next, we'll move on to 10D, which is Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Alder Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make an emotion to approve awarding a contract for Project ID 2020-101, the 2020 Verona Street Asphalt Rehabilitation Project.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Kemp. Alder Touche.
This project is along Northern Lights between Epic Staff Park A and B. Four bids were received for the project, and, and with the following contingencies: traffic control, milling asphallic surface, shaping shoulders, base aggregate dense road gravel, and HMA pavement. Staff, staff estimated the total would be $282,535. Payne &amp; Dolan came Payne and Dolan came in with the lowest bid of one hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Payne and Dolan have completed and is in the process of currently working on other projects with the city of Verona based on past work performed in the city of Verona and reference checks. Public Works staff is in the opinion that Payne and Dolan has the personnel, equipment and financial assistance necessary to complete the two thousand and twenty dash one zero one street asphaltic rehabilitation project.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of awarding a contract for project two zero two zero dash one zero one for the two thousand and twenty Verona Street Asphalt Rehabilitation Project, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? That motion passes. Alder Touche?
Next up, item ten D two, I make an emotion to award a contract for project two thousand and twenty dash one zero two Batumis Seal Coat Project.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. Alder Touche?
We received two bids for this project. The estimate for this project by the city was two hundred eighty thousand three hundred ninety dollars with the following item, including traffic control and chip seal. Farners came in with the lowest bid of two hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. Farners did the work for the city last year and based on past work performed in the city of Verona and reference checks, Public Works staff is of the opinion that Farners has, has the personnel, equipment and financial assistance necessary to complete this Batumis Seal Coat Project.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of awarding the contract for project two thousand and twenty dash one zero two Batumis, Batumis Seal Coat Project. I was, I was pretty close. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion passes. Alder Touche?
I just want to say I had to practice that word many times. Don't feel bad. All right, item ten D three, I make an emotion to approve a developer's agreement for Whispering Coves Phase One Public Improvements.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cornyn. Alder Touche?
City staff and city attorney have worked with the developer for Whispering Coves in preparation for the developer agreement. The agreement anticipates that the construction of the public improvements to serve the phase will commence in early March of two thousand and twenty and will be substantially completed on or about October first of the same year. Pending permit approvals, phase one is the entrance to Whispering Coves adjacent to the wet, to, adjacent to and west of County Highway M and south of County Highway PD.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Mr. Mayor?
Can we just get a condition on there that it's subject to final review by the city attorney and city administrator?
Yes, of course, please add that to my motion.
And that was the understanding of the second as well? Motion with condition before the body, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the developer's agreement for Whispering Coves Phase One Public Improvements with the conditions specified, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? That motion passes. Alder Touche?
Final item ten D four, I make an emotion to approve a professional services agreement with KL Engineering for inspection services for Whispering Cove, Coves Phase One contingent upon legal counsel review and not to exceed three hundred forty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. Alder Touche?
The city received three requests for qualified qualifications and rates for the project reference. The city of Verona Public Works staff reviewed the submittals for the following, with the following criteria, understanding the scope of work, qualifications and experience of assigned staff, availability of technical resources, proven record of successful completion of similar projects, labor rates. Public Works staff checked references for the inspectors proposed by KL Engineering and received positive feedback. Public Works staff is recommending that the contract be awarded to KL Engineering. This is the pass-through cost of the developer. As I said before, the contract shall not exceed three hundred forty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. And this is a time and materials expense, so this, they will only get charged what really happens here. Again, contingent upon legal review. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the professional services agreement with KL Engineering for inspection services for Whispering Coves Phase One with the conditions specified, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion passes. Anything further from Public Works?
None.
All right, we will move on to eleven, new business. First up, we have discussion and possible action regarding a pre-annexation review agreement between the city of Verona and West Madison Bible Church. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. The West Madison Bible Church is requesting to move forward with annexing their property located at two nine two zero County Highway M. The draft agreement requires a deposit and reimbursement for city review costs. The city will draw upon the reimbursement account for costs associated with annexing, including third-party legal and engineering fees. Staff recommends approval of this agreement.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, motions? Alder Kemp?
I'll make a motion for approval of the pre-annexation review agreement between the city of Verona and West Madison Bible Church.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cole. Anything to add, Alder Kemp?
No, sir.
I just have one clarification for Mr. Mayor. So basically, just, just to be a hundred percent certain, this is not, this doesn't mean there's actually a project or anything, it's just, this would be the beginning of it whether a project would be viable. Is that kind of where we're at?
Correct. So these, these are the agreements we do for all properties looking to annex into the city. This is our way of, when they start talking with us and we start drafting the annexation agreement and we start looking at their concept plans and expending dollars from AECOM that we have the ability to make sure that we get our costs recouped if they never annex into the city. So, no, this doesn't bind us over from an, from an annexation standpoint.
Alder Touche?
Is this center or USA?
Yes, it is.
And is, I believe they, do they have one or two properties there?
They have two properties, there is, they're approximately nine to ten acres each and they run long, east-west long, just south of the substation.
Thank you.
Motion before the body, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the pre-annexation review agreement between the city of Verona and West Madison Bible Church, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? That motion passes. We'll move on to eleven B, which is discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number two zero dash nine six two correcting ordinance number two zero nine five six, annexing point two two four acres of land at five fifteen West Run Avenue. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. This is a correcting ordinance for the strip of land that was annexed as part of the Holiday and Express property on, at five one five West Run Avenue. The proposed ordinance will correct the voting districts for the annexing of five one five West Run Avenue. Staff recommends the common council approve the correcting ordinance.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, or motions? Alder Cornyn?
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty dash nine six two correcting ordinance number twenty dash nine five six, annexing zero point two two four acres of land at five one five West Run Avenue.
Motion by Alder Cornyn, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Cornyn? Motion before the body, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ordinance number two zero dash nine six two correcting ordinance number two zero dash nine five six, annexing point two two four acres of land at five fifteen West Run Avenue, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? That motion passes. Next, we'll move on to eleven C, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the process for, for, fulfilling a city council vacancy. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. On March first, Sarah Gaskell resigned as District Two alderperson as she has accepted the Town of Verona Administrator Planning Position. Sarah served on committees and was council president. With this vacancy, staff recommends the council appoint a person to complete the District Two term that expires in April of two thousand and twenty-one and follow a process similar to that which was used to appoint alderperson Posey. Staff recommends the following. On March tenth, which is tomorrow, we start advertising the vacancy. On March twenty-fifth, applications, resumes would be due to the city clerk. On March thirtieth, so the, the second council meeting here in, in March, each candidate would have three minutes to present to the common council and then on April thirteenth, the council would appoint the new alderperson. The above, the process that was just outlined here ensures a new alder is in place prior to committee appointments at the common council organizational meeting on, on April twenty-first. The draft application was included in the, in the packet. Staff is requesting feedback and direction from the council on the process to fill the vacancy. So in your, in your packet, we had the actual application, which kind of outlines a lot of what I just said here tonight, ensuring the people submit this to city clerk Ellen Clark. Items to be included in the application is a brief resume, answers to nine questions. These nine questions were the same questions that we used last time. These questions include, one, why are you interested in serving on the Verona Common Council? Two, what qualifications do you have that, that you feel would make you an effective council member? Three, what services have you performed for the community in the recent past? Four, please describe your experiences with group decision-making and how those experience, experiences could be utilized during your service on the common council. Five, what in your opinion are the three most important issues facing the city of Verona? Six, looking ahead for the next five to ten years, what do you think the city of Verona needs to do to maintain quality of life and economic health of the community? Seven, do you anticipate any conflicts of interest that could arise if you were appointed to the common council and if so, how do you intend to handle them? Eight, what is your availability for common council meetings and committee meetings, which are typically held weekday evenings? And nine, if appointed to the common council, would it be your intention to run for election in two thousand and twenty-one? So the process that we outlined is, you know, it's, it's a little more aggressive than we use in the past and the intent of that is trying to line up better with that organizational meeting that will happen there in the third week of April. So try to get somebody in place so when committee assignments are made that we have that person and we can work with that person versus trying to have them just fill whatever gaps that we've created as part of that process. So staff is looking for feedback. Tentatively, we have something planned to run, run in the paper this week, so we're ready to go, but we're looking for council direction and feedback on kind of how you want us to handle this.
Alder Kemp and then Alder Cole?
Yes, what are you gonna, what specifically are you gonna put in the paper besides that there's an open position and the, and the calendars or anything other than that?
Sure, I can, I can read it to your right here. I know, uh, city clerk Clark had drafted something up here that we sent to them, just bear with me and I can tell you what it says. I think probably importantly, hopefully the, the Verona press isn't here tonight, but I, I would hope they would put a blurb maybe in the first page, second page, third page. That would help us out. What the ad says is... Headline District Two vacant common council seat. The city of Verona is seeking candidates to fill the aldermatic District Two common council seat vacated by Sarah Gaskell effective March first, two thousand and twenty. The Verona County Council will appoint an individual to fill the remainder of the current term, which runs through April twentieth of two thousand and twenty-one. The vacant seat is open to residents of the aldermatic District Number Two. Person is interested in being considered for the appointment should be download an application from the city's website and we list the website. Applications will consist of a brief resume along with answers to nine questions included on the application material on the website. Application should be addressed to city clerk, city clerk Ellen Clark and submitted Ellen in her email address or in person at City Hall with the actual physical address. An application must be received no later than noon on Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty. So it's, it almost looks like a job application, but we tried to get as much detail as we could in there, at least direct people off to the website to find the information. If people can't find the information, don't have availability in the website, we, we'd be happy to hand out paper copies at City Hall.
All right, thank you.
Alder Cole?
Is this going out on social media as well or are you just planning on doing the paper?
I'm sure we can do social media, we do the website, we can do all three or four.
Think we post it, like, like we post the agendas and stuff, like, like at Miller's or anything too, or is that overkill?
Yeah, we can do it, yeah, we could, we can do something like that. I forget what we did last time, but we'll, we'll plaster as much as we can of the community.
Cool, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to encourage anyone listening to call your alder, if you got questions, what it's like. I mean, it's, uh, you'd like to know what's going on at the city, it's a good place to be and you really care about what's going on, we'd love to have you here.
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, is, do we, do you need a motion or is it, do we have consensus here?
If you want to make a motion, it'd be great, but if you don't, I don't think you have to, but I'd prefer a motion if you could.
Okay.
If it was cleaner.
Alder Cole?
I'll make a motion to approve the process for filling the city council vacancy as we discussed.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Touche. Anything to add, Alder Cole?
No, thank you.
Motion before the body, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the process for filling the city council vacancy as we just discussed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion passes. Next, we'll move on to eleven D, which is discussion and possible action regarding the selection of a city council representative to the plan commission. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. So one of the committees that Alder, that Sarah Gaskell served on was the Plan Commission, so we needed to fill that, that spot. So what the ordinance says is at its annual meeting in April of each year, the common council shall by a two-thirds majority vote of its members elect one of its, of its number as a member of the Plan Commission for a period of one year from and after the first day of May, next ensuing. So looking at appointing this, or filling this seat in, in April and then you'd actually vote on this again at the organizational meeting in, in April again. But we would need six votes here tonight of one person who would be nominated kind of for this. And we've, I think we've gone through this before a few times of just how this process works, but looking to kind of fill that, that seat on, on that committee. So any questions for me, I guess?
Before we open up for nominations, any questions for Mr. Mayor? I'll just add one quick question, I know this is, or one quick comment. I know this is only for one meeting, but there's been, well, six votes is, is a high threshold to meet and there have been times when the council hasn't been able to agree on a representative, so I figure if we're gonna have a few months of, of disagreement, we should just kick it off as, as soon as possible. Mr. Mayor?
One thing just to note, the meetings are typically the first Monday of each month at six-thirty. The, the one in April though, just the, just so everyone knows, the one in April for this year is gonna be April eighth at six-thirty, so just so you're fully aware of that. Typically, it's the first Monday, but this one's gonna be the first, the second Wednesday.
All right, with that, we will open it up for nominations. Alder Cornyn?
I would like to nominate Alder Cole to sit on Plan Commission.
Nomination for Alder Cole. Nominations are still open. Would anyone like to nominate anyone else? I want to give people, it's got, it's, it's seven seconds, I like to, to time out, but seeing no other nominations, I guess, a motion? Or should we just have a vote?
I just do a vote, like a, I'm just done lying, real call.
Okay. If the clerk would read the roll?
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
I feel like I need to say Cole. Who I vote for.
That's what I was...
Cole. It's my vote.[1727.11] It's my vote.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Um, I'm gonna interpret the ayes as, as votes for Alder Cole and, uh, say that Alder Cole is the, uh, new plan commission, uh, re- uh, congratulations. And, uh, I guess would you like to say a few words now that you can just say whatever since you got, you got selected?
Um, yeah, thank you for the nomination and the votes. Um, I'm excited to serve on plan commission. I also serve on the Community Development Authority. So I feel like working on plan commission will be very complimentary, um, to my work on the CDA and I'll, um, be able to hopefully bring a well-rounded like opinion and breadth of knowledge to both committees. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll move on to 11E, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the current litigation involving the condemnation claim made by the property owner related to County Highway M slash PD, uh, road project. Uh, is there anything we can say in open session, Mr. Kline Meyer?
Well, um, and I apologize if I start coughing. Um, I, I would say this, if, if you, we, we have a proposed settlement agreement. If, if you have questions about the proposed settlement agreement, I do believe that it would be appropriate to go into closed session for me to answer any of those. And then, uh, hopefully I answer them to your satisfaction and then you can vote in open session. You always have the ability, if you don't think you have questions and you essentially just want to approve the agreement, you don't need to go into closed session. I, I can, um, I can tell you that, uh, the attorney, uh, for Mr. and Mrs. Endress and, uh, Ted and Kyle, who are the attorneys for my office for, uh, the city, worked very hard, um, came up with, uh, a settlement. The settlement is within the scope, um, of the discussions that we had in closed session at our prior meeting. Um, it does require an additional payment to be made by the city, um, in addition to the amount that we've already paid. But again, that total amount is, is within the authority that was, uh, that we discussed. And, um, we also, we still would anticipate, or we would, uh, collect, uh, utility-related costs for the County Highway M project when, if and when the land is annexed and, you know, whi- which we've done with other property owners and like we've done with other property owners adjacent to this project, uh, the city did waive the collection of the, the road cost as part of the agreement if you approve it. And so, um, certainly if you guys have more detailed questions, I would recommend going into closed session, but if that is effectively sufficient information for you based also, you know, piggybacking off of our closed session discussion at our last meeting, you also can just approve the agreement. Um, once, you know, city staff's recommendation is that you approve the agreements. And if you in fact do so, it would be something that it's, you know, there's no language within the document that says that we're gonna keep it confidential or anything of that nature. It would become public. Um, we would then share it with, uh, as part of this, there would also be a stipulation, excuse me, that would be filed with the court to have the litigation, uh, be dismissed.
Thank you for that explanation. Um, I guess motions. Alder Touche?
I'm looking at Chad, who's an attorney, probably better at this, but I'll do what I can. Um, I'm making a motion to approve the settlement agreement, um, that involved a condemnation claim made by the property owner related to County Highway M slash PD road project.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. Uh, anything to add, Alder Touche?
Uh, nothing more.
Motion before the body, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Uh, next we'll move on to, uh, item 11F, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the collective bargaining agreement with Local 311 of the International Association of Firefighters AFL-CIO. Uh, can you give us a brief overview, Mr. Sayer?
Yes, city staff has been negotiating with the, uh, fire union, uh, since November of 2019, a new collective bargaining agreement. Um, I think we've kind of reached a point where we want to update the council on those negotiations and at this time we are requesting a closed session, uh, with the council to provide an update on the negotiations and to obtain feedback and direction from the common council.
Thank you for that explanation. Um, and before, uh, uh, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session, I do want to say that I would ask for unanimous consent to include the acting fire chief, uh, in the closed session as well, since he is on the bargaining committee and he's been involved in the discussions. So I guess, any objections? Seeing none, uh, Alder Touche?
Um, I make an emotion to move into closed section for collective bargaining with Local 311 of the International Association Professional Firefighters AFL-CIO. Uh, the common council may convene in closed session as authorized by section 19 dot 85 per N1 per N E of the Wisconsin statutes for the purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the common council may reconvene in open session and take action on the closed session item.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Cronin, I believe. Uh, the motion to go into closed session is a roll call vote. If the clerk would read the roll.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
All right, we are back in open session at 8:29 PM. We will continue negotiations with Local 311. With that, we will move on to item 12, which is adjournment. Motion to adjourn is in order.
Motion.
Motion by Alder Tichet, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we are adjourned at 8:29 PM. Thank you.